Everyone online and in chambers and watching us on the county channel and other platforms. This is the 2:00 PM meeting on April 4th, 2022 of Community Services and Public Safety Committee. My name's Larry McGinnell and I'm the chairman of the committee. I'll be presiding. Logan Cunningham, who's present online, is the vice chairman. And in council chambers, two other members of the committee, York Glover and Alice Howard, are present. I think that we have Chairman Joe Passman as well in chambers. Anyone else here? Joe, I can't see anybody.
There is no other person. Well, Paul is online.
Paul Somerville, right online, right. Okay, great. So then I'll call a meeting to order and I would ask you to rise and join the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item number three indicates that public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. Item number four is approval of the agenda. Before we approve that agenda, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and move item seventeen, which is the recommended approval of a member of the Beaufort Memorial Hospital Board, up to item number seven and move all of the others in sequence after that. Now, I have a motion to do that?
I will make that motion, Mr. Chairman, to move item seventeen to item six, renumber all other items.
I will second the motion.
We'll bring that to item seven, Joe, item seven.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I will move that forward without objections or any objection to amending the agenda. Hearing none, that motion is approved. Item number five is approval of the minutes.
No, we have to make a motion to approve the amended agenda now.
All right.
I will make the motion to approve.
The amended agenda.
To approve the agenda as amended.
Okay.
I'll second it.
You making that motion? Thank you, Alice. Mr. Scott Eckert, some reveal signs. Wait a minute. Mr. Passman, did you make that motion?
I did.
Alice seconded it, Paul, but thank you very much.
Oh, okay.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move that approval forward without objection. Are there any objections? No objections, that motion is approved and the agenda is amended. Item number five is approval of the minutes, March seventh. I have a motion for that, please. So moved. Thank you. Do you have a second?
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move that forward for approval without objection. Hearing no objections, the approval of the minutes, March seventh, has been approved. Item number six is citizen comments. Here do we have anyone?
No, sir, we don't.
Online or in the audience, no in present. Okay, then we will close out item number six. Item number seven is the recommended approval of Dr. William Jesse or Dr. Jerry Estenson to the Beaufort Memorial Hospital Board. I'll clarify and say Dr. Jesse is a medical doctor and Dr. Estenson is a PhD with a career in corporate and academic endeavors. I have a motion to recommend approval of one of those nominees.
Mr. Chairman, I like the motion that Dr. William F. Jesse be nominated as a member of the Beaufort Memorial Hospital Board.
I'd like to second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Thank you, Mr. Somerville. I'll open this up. Is there any discussion with regard to that recommendation for approval of Dr. Jesse to join the Beaufort Memorial Hospital Board? No discussion? It may be appropriate to tell our audience who Dr. Jesse is and why that motion has been made.
Sure, Dr. Jesse is a highly accomplished physician. He's also been an expert on hospital boards. He's training at Stanford University and the University of California at San Diego. He's done work at the University of Indiana and he sits on many boards and commissions and he's an outstanding candidate for the Beaufort Memorial Hospital Board.
And thank you. Anyone else want to make any comments with regard to Dr. Jesse? Okay, hearing none. I would like to take a vote on recommending approval of Dr. Jesse to the Beaufort Memorial Hospital Board. Is there anyone who objects to that nomination? Hearing no objections, Dr. Jesse's name will be forwarded to full council for their consideration for approval to join the Beaufort Memorial Hospital Board. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Somerville.
Thank you, sir.
And Ms. Howard. The next item on the agenda is an introduction and presentation, introduction of human services outreach specialist and a presentation by that person. Audra, are you going to be handling that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and committee. I am pleased to say that the Human Services Department has hired the Outreach Coordinator, Anna Carreras. I think actually this is her second week with the county, so welcome. Anna has a wealth of personal experience along with a deep understanding of the Spanish-speaking community in Beaufort County. Anna has a bachelor's degree in psychology with a minor in Spanish from the University of South Carolina and is currently working towards her master's degree in social work. In the coming months, Anna will receive an orientation to the department's initiatives and will be exposed to the ongoing efforts community-wide to address homelessness. And what I have done is I have asked Ben to do a brief presentation on a more detailed role of Anna's position.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Hello, Ben.
We are very excited to have Anna on board with us. As Mr. Chairman of you know, we have many colleagues here who also know the many hundreds of hours we've spent over the years discussing issues of homelessness, trying to come up with some solutions for our community. So we're really pleased to have Anna on board, to have someone who can really dedicate themselves forty hours a week to becoming a specialist in all issues related to homelessness and to develop a really deep understanding throughout the community and the region and the state of the resources available to us. Guys, have a PowerPoint, please? So what I wanted to do, since we posted this position almost a year ago, as we were amid COVID and have been experiencing the same challenges everybody else has with identifying folks, wanted to retouch, touch base with you guys again on what those expectations are. Do I have a clicker? You guys? Okay, thank you. So there could be four primary roles for this position. Information referral services, this will be provided both internally to other county departments, colleagues, members of the nonprofit community, as well as the members of the community who might call into our office, either people experiencing homelessness, advocates on behalf of those individuals, or other community members. She will be interacting one-on-one with homeless individuals in the community or otherwise people experiencing housing instability to try to help them identify solutions. She's going to be implementing the U.S. HUD Homelessness Management Information System, HMIS. This is a system through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development by which we'll be able to track data and that will report directly to the feds in terms of what homelessness looks like in our community and what those trends look like in terms of addressing it. And then lastly, developing those countywide and community-specific recommendations for addressing homelessness in the different communities as well as rehousing opportunities. For information referral, our vision is that she will become a coordinated entry point for people experiencing homelessness in the community. We say coordinated entry in the sense that we want all people in the community to call our department so that we can help coordinate interventions, responses, or make recommendations for individuals. This lets us collect basic information about individuals experiencing homelessness. Will help us determine root cause of homelessness or the episode of homelessness. And then will let us generate referrals as necessary, make sure that we can get that individual on the right track since depending on whatever that root cause of homelessness is will influence the appropriate track for them to achieve stability from there. Engagement, she'll be working with a lot of our nonprofit partners as well as municipal and state partners, assessing those root causes, identifying needs and personal goals for individuals experiencing homelessness, and then prioritizing those interventions because depending on what those needs are, will depend on how quickly we need to address it, how we address, and so on, as well as providing a warm handoff to partners. So we don't want to just say, go give a call over to so-and-so. We want to make sure that Anna says, hey, let me go and talk with this partner with you. We'll walk over there, we'll go introduce each other, and we'll talk about some solutions and move you on through the network. Data collection, we want to make sure that we're able to collect consistent county-wide data. We want to leverage those existing resources we have, such as Trade Tracker and other systems we have, as well as implementing that HMIS system we talked about. And this will help us really get a tamp down on all the different trends, root causes, figure out, you know, are we seeing a prevalence of one scenario or another? Or is it mental health, is it addiction, are there other issues going on? And then ultimately identify recommendations and solutions. We want to research comparable communities, figure out what they've done to address issues of homelessness, identify gaps in our local service array, figure out if there's something that we're missing. Of course, coordinate with our municipal partners. And we want to really implement a high-tech, high-touch approach where we're going to be working with folks one-on-one but also leveraging our existing networks and other systems to make sure they get the best support possible. So ultimately, her role is going to be to address needs, build capacity, coordinate intervention, develop recommendations, and establish protocols. And if things go as we plan, within five or so years, we're hoping we achieve what we'll call functional zero, which means that people will be entering homelessness and exiting homelessness at roughly the same rate, which means we can process people through the system and hopefully address their needs immediately and get them back into housing.
Excellent.
You guys have any questions? I'd be happy to address them.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. The HUD system.
Yes.
Is it connected where people from other, like Savannah and Charleston, are they using that system too? I mean, is there, you know, when I first moved here, this is in 1991, they said, oh, we just ship our homeless off to Savannah. That was, you know, hopefully that stopped, but I mean, is it that how, does that interconnect communities?
It is a federal system, so I presume that it is. I haven't used it specifically myself. But the goal, I mean, one of the big goals is to figure out where are folks coming from, where are they moving to? Because this is a transient population. They don't all exist in Beaufort County all at the same time. They're going to move to different communities. So that is something we do want to address and it's very likely that we're going to see people who probably float between Savannah, here, Charleston, other communities. So if it doesn't have that functionality, I would probably work with them to identify a way for us to be able to track that.
I'm so glad to see this. And in forty hours, she's got a huge job ahead.
Yeah, there is no misapprehension. We understand completely the depth and breadth of what this is going to take. But we feel very confident this is going to bear fruit.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Any further questions from anyone before we move on? Hey, Anna, is Anna in the audience or is she watching on the television?
She's here.
Anna's here.
Anna, let me extend a warm welcome to you. You'll be joining a dedicated, talented, and focused group of people and it's a team that we hold in very high esteem. So we're happy that you're joining them and we will stand by and see the great things that you do as you join this terrific team. So welcome to employment at Beaufort County.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, could I just ask one question?
Sure.
No, thank you. You talk about building capacity. Can you expound on that a little? You said you're going to be building capacity.
So a lot of our agencies right now, I mean, everybody is already dealing with issues of homelessness on some level, in some fashion. But it is a very overwhelming issue and the apparent solution, you know, which is housing, is typically not on the table.
Is it not obtainable?
Not, yes, it's definitely not on the table. There are shelters, you know, Savannah and Charleston both have shelters. They're always full. You're always on waiting lines. So it's very, very difficult to achieve an immediate solution to housing. So in terms of building capacity, we want to make sure that all of our agencies also are equipped to address those needs as quickly as possible and that's going to involve identifying additional resources. But we're hoping, you know, within the next couple of years, and this is probably more immediate answer than a lot of the other things, is helping them be more efficient and effective at addressing issues of homelessness, identifying other opportunities for funding and for resources to help folks.
I do have the same concern that Ms. Howard has that we have a tendency of shipping people out and I don't think that's the solution. So as you build capacity, I hope you, part of your goal is to look at some type of shelter or some sort here and working with particularly the mentally challenged. And, you know, because they're the most severe right now and if you can find a solution, they're not going anywhere. They're going to be here and we're just going to have to address that issue as you build capacity.
Absolutely. You know, and this may be wishful thinking, but I'm hoping that as we work on our data collection methods, that's going to give us some more opportunity to go back to the feds and say, guys, we have in the HMIS, in your system, we've recorded a certain number of people who are homeless. Can we ask for more funding for our community? Because a tremendous amount of funding does come down, but the lion's share goes to Charleston. Charleston has one eighty plays. They have a lot of other resources up there. And so you've got to get like a catch-22 where they have the shelter. So, and this is where the shipping part comes in. They have the shelter, so you have people driving people up there where they have an opportunity to be sheltered. But now that person is in Charleston's footprint, which means they record them, they get funded for them, even though they may have originated for our community. So that's why that data piece is so important. If we can make sure that we track those, track those trends, figure out where folks are coming from, that may give us an opportunity to draw some more funds down to our community to achieve those goals. Absolutely.
Make sure you count the people.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anyone else? Any further questions or discussion? Okay, thank you very much and welcome again, Anna.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the introduction of Angie Sally, the executive director of Coastal Empire Community Mental Health Center. Audra?
Yes, sir. I would now like to introduce Angie Sally, executive director of Coastal Empire Mental Health Center. Mrs. Sally was born and raised in Walterboro, South Carolina. She is married to Frankie Sally and they are proud parents of two sons, Nicholas and Christopher. Mrs. Sally earned her undergraduate degree from the University of South Carolina in criminal justice and a master's in rehabilitation counseling from South Carolina State University. Her work history includes employment with the Charleston County Sheriff's Office as a detention officer and a wealth of training from South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy and Charleston County Sheriff's Office. She has also worked as a service coordinator for children with severe emotional disorders with the South Carolina Governor's Office, Division of Continuum of Care. In that role, she worked in Beaufort County, which allowed her to build many collaborative partnerships many years ago. Mrs. Sally is looking forward to developing new and rebuilding some old partnerships in her current role. Mrs. Sally has established a career over twenty-eight years of Mrs. Sally has established career over 28 years of experience. Mrs. Sally has established career with over 28 years of service in South Carolina, and in those years, she has been with the Department of Mental Health since January of 2001. Her first position with the department's division was community mental health with the Coastal Empire in Walterboro. Initially, she was a frontline clinician slash mental health professional, providing direct therapy and case management services. Then in May of 2006, she was promoted to the role of clinic director. In that position, Mrs. Sally supervised both adult and child, children, and adult and adolescent staff, provided clinical supervision and oversight of operations of the outpatient clinic, and a very active off-site psycho-social rehabilitation day program. Other responsibilities included oversight of resources, ensuring the delivery of services to all patients served, and coordinating with the center's treatment team and center-wide management team. In 2000, in September of 2001, she transitioned into her role as the Executive Director for Coastal Empire. As the Executive Director, she is responsible for ensuring the sound operations and oversight of the center for five communities in the state of South Carolina. Those counties include Allendale, Beaufort, Collin, Hampton, and Jasper. She is very privileged to serve our patients and their families, as well as all the great communities we represent in the Coastal Empire. Mrs. Sally's vision aligns with Coastal's mission to fully support the recovery of individuals with mental illness. She is committed to recruiting and maintaining an accountable, professional, competent, and diverse workforce. She has made a personal commitment to developing and maintaining strong collaborative partnership with a focus on increasing access to care, decreasing stigma, prevention, and promoting awareness within all of her attachment areas, all of which is necessary to link patients to their local community support while they receive comprehensive mental health treatment. And I'd like to ask Ms. Sally to come up here and speak.
Thank you, Audra. You're very welcome. I don't think in that introduction, there might be much more for me to say, but good afternoon to all of you and to thank you for this opportunity to be here. Thank you, Ms. Audra, for the invitation. I do apologize for the long bio. It was provided for someone else, and so I asked Ms. Audra to please curtail it to what she needed, but again, I thank you. So I'm Angie Sally. I'm the current Executive Director for Coastal Empire Community Mental Health Center, and I am, again, am very privileged to serve not just Beaufort County, but the other four counties that are included in our catchment area. I am making it a high priority, or it is a high priority, to be more involved and to have our center more involved in this community, to work towards exploring the needs of the community so that we are answering to those needs. We have a big focus right now on community-based programs outside of just what we do in the clinic, which are our normal clinic-based services, which, for those of you who may not know, Coastal Empire is an extension of the Department of Mental Health. We are your community mental health center. And so we provide rehabilitative services to those, we give priority to the severely or those impacted by mental illness that may be more persistent. And we also focus on a lot of community programs that we now have to offer through the department that we did not have in the past, such as individual placement services, which helps our patients to be able to find or to prepare them to be work-ready and also connect them with vocations and careers of their choice. We also have our mobile crisis program, which we are in the process of developing, or I wouldn't say redeveloping, it was community crisis response intervention, and now we've moved to mobile crisis, which is a little bit differently, different. Our school mental health programs, care coordination, which links patients to resources within the community, just as a few, and also like our peer support services. And so one of the things that is really a high priority, as I said, and a commitment, is to restore something that I do know that we once had in Beaufort County, and it is to get us back to doing the business of hand of what we need to do to serve our community, to open doors for access, for treatment, to be involved as much as we can when we have requests to provide in services or any type of education that we can provide to work towards prevention, being a part of any coalitions and community processes that we can. I've already started working with both Phil Foot and Fred Lyta, meeting with them to talk about some opportunities that we may have, kind of grant that's sitting back there. And so wanting to do a lot more of that and having our team out in the community so that we are responding to the needs of the community here.
Excellent.
Any questions?
Sally, could I ask a quick question on your estimate? Do you work with adults and the youth?
Yes, we do.
You have an estimate in Beaufort County in particular on the number of individuals in both of those categories may need your attention?
So what I would...
Not the one you're serving, but the total pool that may need your attention?
Okay. So currently Coastal is serving over 2,200 patients, and of those 2,200, there are approximately 11, I would want to say 1,100 was the last count that I had that's between adults and children. And I will tell you that that is a very low number for us. A lot of that has to do with staffing. Our school mental health services here in Beaufort County is not where we would like for it to be. I just had a conversation with Dr. White from Beaufort County School District, and our plans to meet to talk about the expansion of school mental health services on our behalf to serve the county. Part of that has to do with staffing. We're not, you know, it's not any different for us than it has been for anyone else as far as recruitment and retention of staff. Quite frankly, we are pretty understaffed right now, and I have about, I have 78 full-time employees, and for us to be full staff, really, we should be at at least 120. And so that impacts services and service provision. But what we have done as a result of COVID in the last several months is we have been able to serve across county lines via telehealth services, and so that does assist. So we do have people that are staff members that are in other counties that will open cases and provide therapy services to patients in Beaufort County. And this has been where we've had more of a request to do that for our Beaufort County adult services and for school mental health services.
How many counties do you cover?
Five. Allendale, Beaufort, Collin, Hampton, and Jasper.
Okay. Do you have actual physical facilities in Beaufort County?
Yes, we do. We have our main center, which is at 1050 Rebot Road.
Okay. Okay, thanks. I'll open it up. Are there any other questions or items for discussion from anyone online or in the council chambers?
Just a quick one, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Sally, you short-staffed, you said, at this time, but the budget is there to support the additional staff?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I can do.
Yes. We could always use more, but currently for the, and that is withholding because with those 120 positions, that still would not really put us at 100% of what we need, Councilman Glover. It really would not. And so the budget is there because we are the only state agency, for those of you who may not know this, that are responsible for generating about 50% of our revenue from the billing that we do. So the less staff you have, the less revenue is coming in. The hopes with replacing those positions that are providing services, then that would increase revenue. And so we have a formula that helps our staff to see, based on what they do as far as providing needed recovery-oriented services, that that percentage of what they're, there's a percentage of what they do that supports their position, as it does other positions that might be in more of a support role for the center that we may not have. And so the 120 still wouldn't get us to where we need to be, so I probably would change the answer to that question and say, no, we are not.
I'm going to take your first answer.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Let me ask you this, too. You have, you have a collaboration with hospitals and healthcare centers, et cetera, as you work with building your capacity at the center?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Other healthcare organizations, hospitals, outpatient, law enforcement, DSS, probate, DJJ, we've tried to build partnerships with every agency, every service organization that are operating because at some point, the lives of our patients are touched by a lot of those organizations. And so what we're looking for in developing those relationships are better outcomes for our patients.
So when you, when you do have a mental person, are you the contact person agency for that, or how is that?
We are most of the time. Of course, there are private providers that are in, within the community, but from the ED standpoint, from the emergency departments, if they are encountering someone who is impacted by, or an individual who is diagnosed with a mental illness and they need assistance as far as finding a bed or finding resources or making a referral, most of the time, those do come to Coastal Empire.
Okay. Thank you.
And Sally, we're starting, we're in the planning stage of starting initiative to focus more on mental illness and homelessness within the county. And as we move into a more advanced stage of that initiative, I'm looking forward to engaging with you further on this very important topic, and I want to thank you for coming today to tell us what you do. It's a pleasure to meet you, and I expect that we, I hope, I'm sure, we'll be seeing more of you in the future. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you, and you will. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite Assistant County Administrator Patrick Hill forward from the Information Technology, Technology and Communications Department to give us a briefing on what's happening in that department. So what's happening, Patrick?
Awesome. Thank you very much. My name is Patrick Hill, and I'm the ACA for the Communications and IT Division. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to talk to you about some of the work that's going on within the division. First off, what I wanted to talk about was we received the results from our 2021 nationwide cybersecurity review, and this is a kind of a lengthy questionnaire that's sent out by Homeland Security that can kind of gauge our overall cyber maturity. And when we compare it to other counties and to other peer organizations, we were above average. One of the areas that was identified where we were the weakest was in how our users authenticate to the network. So one of the things that we're going to be working on is changing our authentication method. And this was also echoed pretty strongly during the first annual South Coast Cyber Security Conference, which was last month. They also talked a lot about upgrading the way we authenticate really all across the nation. So we're going to be doing that, and we'll be reaching out to you all and to department heads and stuff as time goes on, as we implement this system. And some of the folks that are going to be implementing this are here today, and these are some new faces in the IT department that I wanted to introduce to you because when somebody comes up and asks you, can I borrow your cell phone so I can update it, or can I borrow your laptop so I can upgrade it, you should at least know who they are to make sure that they're not a malicious actor. So I got three new folks here that you may see. If you guys want to come up here. Real quick, we have, we have Ivan Leon. He's an external candidate from GE Electric. We also have Latara Grant. She is an internal candidate, new hire from voter registration. And we have Tina Wright Allen from Zoni. So you may see these faces contacting you about upgrading your cell phone, upgrading your laptop and as well, so they're friendly, so.
Well, let me extend a welcome to you on behalf of council and the executive staff. Say how happy we are that you're here, and let me also say, we need you. So it's great, Patrick, get them to work as soon as you can because we need them to bring us up to speed in our technology. So, which is not to say it isn't, but I'm sure they can make it better.
Oh, yes.
Thank you all very much. Thanks, Patrick.
Also, we have Ms. Shakia Polite. Could you come up here real quick for a second? Shakia's been in the department for quite a while. I'm sure many of you recognize her. Probably for about the last four years, she's been our IT project manager. She has a PMP certification, she has advanced degrees as well. And so she has decided to help us out by acting as the interim IT director until we can permanently fill the position. So you may be getting some emails or some correspondence from her as well as she takes on this new role to kind of help us out and keep this ship going forward.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Real quick, just a, just a few more things. The mapping and applications team have completed their new Citizens Transparency Portal, and we hope to bring that live by the end of the month. We also have a FOIA portal that's in production, and we should, excuse me, that's being, being rolled out, so we hope we can have that done by the end of the month because we want to roll out those two items together because it would make a great news story per our PIO and deputy administrator. In addition, the mapping and applications department, they've upgraded the BC Connect mobile app. They've also created a litter control app as, or excuse me, a litter control ticketing app, and they've also created a animal services mobile ticketing app. So they've been doing some great things with some code on the backend. The communications team is continuing to roll out Gas Station TV with new content. Currently, it's running the library's summer bookmark contest. It's also running Free Tax Help, which is available at some of the libraries. It's also running Live, Work, and Play Beaufort County and Business License Renewal Information. So Gas Station TV hits about 200,000 views per month, and it's extremely cost-effective. You know, the, the exact same number of views, if we were to put it on a television station, would probably cost about 75% more. They've also have a great partnership that's going on with WHHI and 843 TV. So the new 843 TV that's going to be coming out is the Parks and Rec Focus. They're going to be focusing also on mosquito control education, and they're going to be talking about broadband everywhere. So those are the three 10-minute programs that are going to be coming out on 843 TV. Finally, we have broadcasting. They're continuing to work on upgrading hardware. They've recently upgraded their cameras. They replaced some 10-year-old cameras, so we should have some better quality broadcasts for when they go out into the field. They're also working on a spot that is going to go, that is going to play during the Heritage Golf Tournament. And they've also kind of revamped their on-air schedule so they can, they can show more of the municipalities' broadcasts and do some more work with them. So that's probably it in a nutshell. I have all the, all the superheroes on the line behind us if you have any questions about anything we're doing, about anything I mentioned.
Is it going to be a two-step procedure for authentication?
Yes.
Okay. I'm familiar with that. In other, you know, you, you put your information in, and then they send it to your cell phone with a code that you put back in, and that's the only way you get in?
Yes. Yeah. And, and it helps, it really does. There are a lot of cyber threats, you know, going kind of off-script here for a second. The, we had something really interesting happen last week. We had a, an email went out to two individuals in the county, and it was a very specific, very malicious email, and our systems caught it, right? We caught it, and we analyzed it, realized it was bad, and it didn't let it pass, right? But the reason I examined this one, because it was very interesting to me. Normally, when we see malicious emails, they get spread out to the entire domain or to a large group of people, but this one just went to two, and it went to Chairman Passamit and the absentee voter email address. So that's pretty targeted. But anyway, we analyzed the code, and yeah, if it, if it would have made it through, and it, and it was clicked on by the right person with the right credentials, it would have, would have started encrypting, so scary stuff. So yes, those authentication methods would really help. Our score overall was really good compared to other counties, but it can be better. We could be, we should be in the 90% range or 95% range for our overall cyber maturity, and this would put us into that bucket, so.
Any further questions for Patrick from anyone online or in the audience? Hearing none, Patrick. Thank you very much. Appreciate all that you do for us.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is approval of a resolution recognizing April as Fair Housing Month. Audra, you going to talk to us about that?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. April is nationally recognized as Fair Housing Month, so I am seeking approval for a resolution recognizing Fair Housing Month, which is required yearly by all community development block grant, grantees.
Okay, can we get that authority from committee, or does it go from committee to full council, Audrey, do you know?
Full council, sir.
Okay, then I'll be seeking a motion to approve a resolution recognizing April as Fair Housing Month.
I'd like to make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Logan, thank you for the second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Move this along without objection. Are there any objections? Hearing no objections, this matter will be forwarded to council at the next council evening. Thank you, Audrey.
Thank you, sir.
I remember twelve is recommend approval of a resolution to revise the Beaufort County Emergency Disaster Policy and Procedures, A decimal nine. Neil, Neil did that? Good. Thank you, Neil. Good to see you.
Good afternoon, Chairman, committee members. Presenting today a resolution to revise the existing Beaufort County Emergency Disaster Policy and Procedure, in particular, Section eight point nine. The Public Works Department worked closely with the HR Director, Scott Marshall, for some of these revisions. Some of the highlights, just to kind of give you a quick highlight to some of the changes that we included, was new definition of the op-ongs. This is a federal change. They now went from three to five as far as levels. Also, we did a better outline of the responsibilities for upper administration managers and supervisors, in particular, and how it relates to our current county structure. We also did a definition of EOTs, which is our emergency operation teams that get deployed during an emergency event. And then finally, we asked for an increase or proposed increase for standby pay for the designated EOT personnel to going up from two dollars to three dollars. We did a comparison with Charleston, Dorchester, and Jasper County to come up with that increase. This increase is only going to be in effect if the EOC is activated, and it is a potentially reimbursable expense that could be reimbursed by FEMA or other agencies.
Excellent. Sorry, I was on mute. Any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none.
Just one.
Sorry?
Yeah. Two dollars to three dollars is, I mean, I really didn't understand that at all, from two dollars to three dollars. What's-
So once the emergency operation center is activated, the central personnels are put on standby. And so folks that are put on standby get a standby pay, and this is to increase that from two dollars to three dollars.
That's it?
An hour.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question, follow-up to that. That's per hour, and that, and that means you can't leave the county?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
And you're on standby?
That's correct.
But you could, you could be at home, or you could be at the, at the operation center?
Correct.
Either one.
Yep. You're on standby. And this is, this is different if, if, if the EOC was activated and you were deployed for a mission or whatnot, then this is just pre-storm or during standby.
Okay.
And this is addition to their annual, their hourly wage, or is this the only pay they receive?
In addition.
So if they're on standby, they're getting the hourly wage, and this ups the hourly wage to three dollars instead of two?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
But yeah, increased by three dollars.
Yeah, right. But it's in addition to what they would, what they would be getting in their, in their normal workday if they're on standby. So if they're getting nine dollars, it goes up to twelve, whatever the numbers are.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further questions? All right.
No, that makes sense now. Okay.
Are there any further?
This was not just a three, paying three dollars.
I got you now.
Okay. I guess everybody, if they're only getting three dollars more, they'd really be looking forward to the standby assignments, you know?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks, Neil. I will take a motion to recommend approval of this resolution to revise the Beaufort County Emergency Disaster Policy and Procedures.
I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Logan. May I have a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll move this forward without objection. Are there any objections? Hearing no objections, this matter is approved, and will be forwarded to council for a full vote on the resolution. Thank you, Neil, very much. The next items, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, are all recommending approval of appointments through a variety of physicians within the county. First is Joe Walsh to the Beaufort County Muffin Council Fire Department Fire District Board, her first term. Second one is Galen Colmio and Danielle Quat, the Beaufort County Disabilities and Special Needs Board, each for a first term and an expiration twenty twenty-six. The next one is Andrew Mason and Nancy Lutte to the Fusco Island Fire District, each for their second term expiring twenty-six. Reappointment of Chet Houston to the Ladies Island St. Helena Fire District Commission for a second term expiring in twenty-six. And the reappointment of Bruce Jager Jr. for a fourth term and Bill Brown for a second term, the Beaufort County Parks and Recreation Board, each expiring in two thousand twenty-six. Does anyone take exception to any of those names and appointments? Hearing no exception, I'd like to have a motion to approve items thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen as amended for recommended approvals of these appointments.
Some move, Mr. Chairman. You saying twelve, twelve, thirteen, are you saying twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, right?
Well, it's, we, yes, we've changed the numbers to thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, and seventeen. But yes, it's all the recommended approvals of appointments to people to Beaufort County Boards and Commissions.
Yeah, that's my motion. Thank you, sir.
Still second.
Thank you, Logan. I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing no discussion. I will move this for approval without objection to the full council for a recommendation and a vote. Hearing no objections, motion carries. Thank you very much. Anything further for the good of the Community Services and Public Safety Committee? Hearing nothing, I will have this meeting stand adjourned. Thank you all very much for your participation.
What time will we start?